Let's get ready to get started. Thomas Fair.
Father, thank you for letting Mr. Jared here tonight, Lord. And, Lord, just laying a hand down on these men has got them back decisions from the city that that it's on their hearts and to do it the way that it needs to be done, it needs to be done in the way you see it, Lord. Lord, just watch over God, each and every person here, and check them out with your name and prayer.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We got a phone door if you need, we'll do something different. Alright, so this meeting, let's see, we got Kerry Brady? Jimmy Clark?
Yes.
Al Moore?
Yes.
Chris, like, Chris Flurz, Adam.
Chris is home with a fever and I asked him not to come. He's sick, I'd rather not have him here. I'd need him here, but I'd rather he be sick, I'd rather not be here with a fever, so. Alright, uh, first thing on the agenda, be approval of October twenty-fourth minutes.
What's that? That was the public hearing one, and the one where we did all the ordinances with the lawyers, so it's attached.
Okay.
Back there.
So the first thing we need to approve is the twenty-fourth minutes, and then we'll need to approve the, uh, special meeting on October twenty-fourth also, so we need to approve both of those.
Make motion to approve the actual twenty-fourth minutes?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so a roll call, we got Jimmy Clark?
Yes.
Kerry Brady?
Yes.
And Al Moore?
Yes.
All in favor, three to zero.
Then you need a motion to approve the next one, too, I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay, I make that motion.
Second.
Motion's a second.
Alright, Jimmy Clark?
Aye.
Kerry Brady?
Aye.
Al Moore?
Yes.
Brady, you got to seal, I don't think we have to have this, but that's on the other, it's got a seal there, so you got to seal it. We shouldn't have to have that again, because it's been signed and sealed, but we're going to ball it out again here in a minute.
Though, I talked to Matt, but he said all the patent records are submitted, everything had the seal on it, got signature, so everything was submitted, done.
It was held, or, um...
He said everything is done. And Ryan, he said you did not have to be there.
Right.
I got your email in the package.
Two spots for everybody, so, no, we don't have to sign the second.
They gotta sign.
Gotta sign.
One for me and one for you.
Yeah, but they don't have to sign the special meeting, just mean it's... Alright, the November second, uh, special council meeting minutes?
The one where, uh...
David Black?
Black came in, but I need to...
Do I have a motion to accept the special meeting November second?
He did, he didn't want to...
That's a second, okay. Who's the second?
Kerry's second in main.
He's alright.
Alright, where you gonna meet at?
Just wherever you want.
In your name?
Yeah, apparently you just signed it.
He said, I have one set of those. I usually walk around and then help everybody.
And you did it, right?
Yeah, so here's my side.
Okay, now there's another one.
Alright, there's one.
So I need to say about one, so...
You need, Ellen needs, Ellen signed it, that's all, so, there's your second.
I agree, alright, I get that.
Alright, we have a CD coming up, uh...
Three, actually.
Okay, October final, yeah. Now, may want to look at those a little deeper tonight, because we've got the budget to look at, the year-to-date totals are all there with you tonight, so if y'all got any questions on that, you need to kind of look at that and see how your year-to-date totals are going against what the new budget's gonna go. Those numbers are through October. So you've got three more months to go. The only thing we're running over budget on is the street, and we knew we were gonna run over on the street, because we did that extra painting and the sidewalk work, so there's not, not really surprise, we're over there, everything else is...
There's money coming back on that one, though.
It's basically back, and Brenda's paid the money back, the City General wrote a check, it's put fifty thousand dollars in the bargain, City General's a little bit of a C D N. She wrote a check on that last week, and transferred that money back to City General, so, so that's paid back. That won't reflect in this, because it is done after that, so, but it is paid back.
And we do have two payments coming back on the sidewalk.
Still got two payments coming back. That project is real close to revenue.
There's one I was referring to, I think, is it like a...
No, the payment coming back on the bridge is going to, you know, send us the money, then we have to send the money to the housing department, plus our small portion, that should be next month, and then that'll go on the back of the note, I believe.
Okay, so this year, on the bridge work, remember, okay, we had to make our payment. So we made a full payment, we got the grant money, that was eighty-twenty.
Yes.
Okay, we're getting that money, but we have to go ahead and make another year's payment this year, because we have to have a copy of the council check where it ties in with that, so we're gonna make two years of that note payment, and it'll go on the back end of it. So whatever the eighty percent that was, wasn't it a hundred thousand, roughly a hundred thousand dollars? That you got on that grant, but we have to do the match.
Which is hundred sixty.
But you have to pay, so we had to pay two payments, out of water and sewer on that bridge, that was actually sewer, wasn't it? On that bridge project, uh, so you're gonna be ahead on that bridge project payment, it'll pay off, seven, ten years, it'll probably pay off in about eight. But the money, the money that you get on the grant will go on the tail end of the note, not the front end of the note. And we have made that payment, that won't show up until next month either, we did that this month. We just let you know, so you don't get excited about that, we're making two years, really over two years of payments, because we made the year's payment, and then to get the grant, you had to max the grant, it'll pay off on the tail end of the note. So we've got about three years, almost, of that ten-year note payment. What is it?
I, I, look, if you look at, uh, page twenty-eight, circle two and a half.
Okay.
CR garbage collection, didn't that have an increase this year? Was it sign reflected in that?
Yes, it did.
So is that not reflected in that?
You're always, you have three months.
Okay.
The budget, the budget...
So right now, it's what it is?
Well, hang on, that's, that's, but you're, yeah, you're three months out, so...
Okay, okay. Are you saying it's all going to be a match?
Well, it's close to matching, but, yeah.
It's about ten, isn't it, sixteen, seven, seven?
Oh, six, yeah, that is.
That's what I meant. But I forgot it's on through October. Well, the other one's through October.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's what you're paying, so that's what that number is.
We're thinking, we're wanting to go up on our council end.
Yeah. Before I was... So the match's October last year.
On what time that goes into effect, did you, really, what time, does he get a pay raise?
He got a pay raise, was that three months ago, twelve days?
Yeah.
I'd have to look, I think it was three months ago.
The budget on the, it's for the record, for what I'm arguing, it's, you know, the budget, I mean, I hate to speak brutal, but it's pretty much a joke anyway, because it's gotta be in the blacks for the state, but we can amend it at any time, so, you know, with like, previous, you know, it's just like stick a number down that matches, and then you have to go back and amend it, darn thing. But, um, that's pretty much right, anyway, I mean, it's like we always hang on, I mean, I think one year we had, uh, six hundred dollars maintenance.
If you look on the next page, it's showing it, yeah.
On seven vehicles, I mean, stuff like that, you know, ain't gonna add up, then the revenue overtakes it, but...
Look at your, look at your tunnel expenses on the next page, on twenty-nine, and you'll see where it's, it's, it was a hundred and forty-eight thousand last year at this day, it's a hundred and sixty-nine this year.
Yeah. And that woke up the way, like she asked me, that wages, that's because we, we don't have that, we only have one employee.
We have, they're still two in the budget, but we've, one of the ones that we're baking is there. We got, as of today, we're two employees short.
Yeah, a motion to...
I make a motion, we approach this line.
Do I have a motion to accept the financials as presented?
You have a motion to accept.
Do you have a second? Have a second, carry seconds.
Jimmy Clark?
Aye.
Kerry Brady?
Aye.
Al Moore?
Aye.
All in favor, three to zero.
The proposal base is on that page, more than...
It's there, it's there tonight, and we'll discuss it, and then y'all make changes on it, because you want to prove it tonight, you just need to discuss it.
Yeah.
Uh, C D?
C D, so, we have three coming up in December, trying to jump on this prior to going on inspired, I guess. If you look at your paper over there, this one looks like this right here.
One point seven, one point two eight.
That's, that's what they gave me for a bid, but this is the three CDs that I'm talking about here. There's one that has a one point four percent interest rate, that's at Diamond Bank, it comes due twelve eleven twenty-three, it's for twenty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-four and fifty-six cents.
When's that due?
Um, twelve eleven twenty twenty-three, so next month on the eleventh. Uh, the very next one is at Southern Bancorp, it's a three point five three percent, it comes due on twelve twelve twenty twenty-three, and it's a twenty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. And the very next one, same interest rate, that's three point five three percent, same date, twelve twelve twenty-three, and it's a twenty-seven thousand, four hundred nine and eighty-eight cents.
Where's it at?
Those two are at Southern Bancorp, and the first one's at Diamond Bank. So there's three different CDs, one at Diamond Bank, and two at Southern Bancorp. I passed out a bid sheet that they provided me today, on the top, it has the different amounts, the twenty-seven, the twenty-six, and the other twenty-seven, four oh nine, so they're a little bit different. All the rates that they often give us, they're the same for each C D, so you guys just need to determine whether you're, uh, these are all, I believe, currently one-year CDs.
What is the first one, was it one what?
One point four zero percent.
What happened to it, did it, it was eighteen months or something?
Yeah, so it was, it was eighteen, or whatever it's coming due, so, the new rates are over here.
Diamond Bank's got the best for twelve months, which is where we've been, but, and that's where your highest interest rate is.
Five point two eight. The other two are at Southern Bancorp.
Diamond lost last month, I wonder if they've lost the month, or have they?
No, they haven't been over this month, the other two are at Southern Bancorp, and they're three point five three, so...
There you're going up.
Can we combine them all three, or, uh?
Uh, no, they're all different, well, ones...
What accounts are these, are they...
Maintenance, maintenance.
They're all in general fund.
Let's combine them, dude.
You could combine them in one C D, they're in general fund.
Yeah, that's what's on general fund, maintenance, general fund, maintenance, general fund.
So if y'all wanted to... Well, you're gonna have to move two of them, if you move, or one of them, depending on what bank you go with, unless you change...
Two of them, man.
Right.
So we have to move those two.
But you can move them, and then just do one C D, if you want, just make one C D, they're all, all in general fund, that'd be easier.
I would check on that, because I'm happy, I mean, my first one, I'm happy with the five point two eight.
I'm just not sure if the, I'm not sure if the banks would change their rate for a larger amount of money.
That's true, that expense...
Yeah, but so I provide them the amount of the C D, and they may bid off of that.
So it may change...
They know there's three individual CDs for twenty-seven, twenty-seven, and twenty-six, and then if we lump those all together, they may or may not...
So we need a motion to move all three pending...
What do you find out?
Find out that we can combine it, and one is simply a diamond.
I'm gonna say if it's within a quarter of a percent to combine them, put them all together at the same bank, no more money than it is anyway, so that's like about a hundred thousand dollars.
So these are the same, primarily besides Diamond Bank, these are all the same as last month's, they did not go up. Last month, there was one for a hundred and nine, and one for seventy-six, or something like that, so...
Is that same?
That would, that's total, that's higher than what these three would be together, and their interest rates did not change.
I'll make a motion, you move them all to Diamond Bank, lump them together, if you can do it at five two eight.
Okay, well, yeah, it won't go down.
That's just my opinion, if you do that.
Or separately, if it's five point two eight. Yeah, if they wanna do it, it's still a better deal.
Yeah.
Have a motion to accept the five two eight to Diamond Bank. Have a motion, second.
So, I mean, obviously, if they, if they win all three of them...
That's a...
The motion, yeah, I mean, so then...
Just saying, they come back and say, we'll do all three of them for free, no, do them individually at five two eight.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they're not gonna do that.
They won't, but anyway, you have to check on that.
I'm just saying, they're open for...
Motion's a second.
A second, so Kerry Brady?
Aye.
Jimmy Clark?
Aye.
Al Moore?
Aye.
All in favor of moving Diamond Bank for the five point two eight.
Right.
Brenda, I don't have a letter in here, could you type me up a letter on I T services?
Thank you.
I don't have one.
Those are all general.
Yeah, there's a thing down there.
Right here, I've got the letter right here, really.
It's, there's one here, I just didn't have it. I don't know what happened there.
I have the last piece of equipment ordered in, uh, that we don't have, that, uh, D J didn't feel comfortable with till we did, and, um, I might, I would like y'all to dismiss I T Network Solutions, because I want to use that money somewhere else in the budget, if we get in the budget on the, uh, he's put, he's got equipment, nice guy, he's putting in, so we'll individually back up every computer individually, so if one crashed, all you gotta do is put a new drive in, and hit one button, and the stuff loads back into the, uh, but we needed sixteen hundred of the equipment, I've got it ordered, and that'll be the last thing he needs to do, where he's comfortable taking over doing all of our I T stuff. If y'all are happy with that, that's seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars a year, and you've basically been there one time this year, reloaded a drive, so... December, you send them a letter, go give them thirty days' notice, if y'all want to get rid of them, if you don't, I have to change the budget up. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Alright, Jimmy Clark?
Aye.
Kerry Brady?
Aye.
Al Moore?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor.
The password thing might be a little bit more tricky than...
We've got the pass, we finally got the password, get the city's webpage back up. They had our webpage married together on...
More of the former layers don't have it, so it's password, too.
It was all given to I T Solutions, I've got them back, and, uh, our webpage is married with GoDaddy, with all the cities that they represent, they've got them all, one, which that's dangerous, everything, if you crashed one website, you got all of them. We're going back to the city's webpage, and we'll have that up, the information right now, I've got the third department's loading all of this data daily on there, so that'll be available for the public, water department, uh, doesn't have static I T's, we'll get him doing that. For the end of the year, all the information will be on the city's webpage, if anyone wants to see it, they just click on it, and it's right there. Um, it's already up in Glenwood AR dot net, but Glenwood AR dot com's where our webpage used to be, and... Will, they'll both be the same, go both the same, so we're working on that. My paperwork must be messed up, because I don't have the hazard mitigation right here.
You don't have to read them?
No.
There's a, a letter, one of the letters that we just read, he's assigned. Do you have a copy of that? No.
Yeah, I've got a mix from one of them.
So you got one, I got one.
You got one more signed on there.
Yeah.
Hazard mitigation, this is the work that's been done, you have the hazard mitigation paperwork, I do, that is not for public, in case of disaster, and all of us are killed or something, it's a plan that somebody comes in here and gets that book and reads, and that's the way the city should be run. Uh, it's not a public record, uh, but we need to do the resolution to approve it.
You got this, we'll just get us...
You, council and mayor can look at that, it's not, it's got some personal, a lot of personal information in it, and it's not, uh, this is not a public record piece, it is a, the only time it's seen me looked at is if you, some of them get wiped out, hopefully that never happens, but... So the resolution twenty-three fifteen, y'all need to approve it, if y'all haven't looked at the hazards mitigation paperwork... Ryan has it, if anybody wants to look at it, it's all the stuff that Karen Barlow asked each of you individually to fill out, I have looked at it as a group, I filled out my part, and y'all filled out y'all's part, and that's all, that's all you're signing here, is that...
I put you down as a sewer operator in the middle of tragedy.
So, resolution twenty-three dash fifteen, uh, resolution of the city of Glenwood, Arkansas adopting a Pike County multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan, where the city of Glenwood recognizes that the threat that natural hazards pose to the people and the property within Glenwood, Arkansas, whereas the city of Glenwood has prepared a multiple hazard mitigation plan, hereby known as a Pike County multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan in accordance with federal laws, including the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, as amended, the National Flood Insurance Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, and the National Dam Safety Program Act as amended, and, whereas the Pike County multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property of the city of Glenwood from the impacts of future hazards and disasters, and whereas adoption by the city of Glenwood demonstrates its commitment to hazard mitigation and achieves the goals outlined in the Pike County Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan. Now, therefore, be it dissolved by the city of Glenwood, Glenwood, Arkansas, that section one in occurrence with local rule for adopting resolution, the city of Glenwood adopts the Pike County multi-jurisdiction hazard mitigation plan, where content related to the city of Glenwood may require revision to meet the plan's approval requirements, changes occurring after adaptation will not require the city of Glenwood to re-adopt any further irritation or plan, the subsequent plan updates follows an approved period for this plan while required separate adoption resolutions. Okay, so basically, one of us go, we're gonna update it.
Make a motion and adopt.
Thank you, because I want to read it again.
Resolution twenty-three fifteen.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, Al Moore?
Yes.
I have the passing, yes, okay, Al, we got Kerry Brady?
Aye.
Jimmy Clark?
Aye.
All in favor, three to one, three and a... Prove, go to, yeah, says the twenty, about twenty-seventh. In favor.
Favor, uh, three.
Yeah, three to zero. In favor? Motion's a second.
Alright. Brenda, I've mentioned everything, I don't have the next one either.
Something's wrong with your packet.
Here's a change order. Here you go.
Okay, change order, number two, Water Project First Street, Louisiana. We did some extra paving, was more than we thought, and, so this is the difference, this will close out the, uh, what would it call, the money that this is spent out of?
The American Rescue Fund.
This, that y'all have been working on getting, using for the last three years, four years, four years, I don't know.
We have time to split by the end of this year, and this will...
The fund is closed out, and we're over, American Rescue Fund, you do the five thousand, when out of water and sewer, you're gonna do the six thousand. I just need to put in the change order, and that will finish the project out with all the money being spent. We spent sixty-nine hundred dollars over, that will come out of the water and sewer.
What, what's hands on that, what was it?
Well, the original contract was like one seventy-six, and the final contract's like two oh eight, two oh nine.
Right, yeah. We added some, uh, put baobab, uh, put baobab tos in.
It's the second patch of the change.
And then there was a little bit more on painting, because we had some bigger tariffs than the square footage was on that.
I can make a motion to accept the change order.
Can one of us have one of the old copies of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so, got a motion to accept a change order, we got a second, Al Moore?
Aye.
Jimmy Clark?
Aye.
Kerry Brady?
Aye.
The next paperwork is signed, it's something y'all have all approved, this is the redoing of bond issues for. Uh, clarify all the bond issue money and the actual dollar amount will be told is Friday, I mean the fifth. Because the money that went into the reserve account and all that has got to be spent on that so they won't make the full barry on this money to the fifth, but the dollar amount, we know what it is, but. How the money's gonna be broke down, we know what's owed, but we've got some more money, that's kinda hard to explain that the city. So much of that money goes into reserve account, the city's off control, there's money that'll go into that through December. And so when that money's all put in there, then the final barry amount, I don't understand how these bond issues. Do that, but all the money will be, we'll get the final tally of the number, we know how much the money is, but you'll get the final tally of what come out of city water reserve account. And how much was actually barried.
Looks like it's about a million dollar differential.
Million, there's quite a bit of money in the reserve account and that was gonna pay down the principal, you know, barry on there. But that, this is all paperwork signed by the attorney that had to be there to get all this enacted. And I've signed it, y'all have voted on doing it all, but this is the official paperwork on it, I need y'all to approve it. Because I'm gonna prove the fifth, but this is.
Is it, man, they're looking, looking page forward. Says council member Brady, did it matter?
Here's council member.
Oh yeah, I'm thinking, uh, alright. Forgive me. Because we call her Carrie, not Brady, we call you right here, nevermind.
Okay.
Alright, so, we got a motion.
Y'all like some town to introduce us?
Do you have these little things, your name tags right here?
Alright, Alan.
Alright. Motion, Carrie second. Roll call, Jimmy Clark. Alright, alright, Karen Brady, Alan Moore. Alright, all in favor?
Alright. The next set of spreadsheets is something, the city's insurance. As y'all remember, we changed in the city, we don't have co-insurance anymore, we're insured. If you look at the sheet, it's got more yellow, that's what I presented y'all before in the premium. Um, it was twenty-eight thousand, city was paying sixty-eight thousand. Okay, now then, if you look on the mech sheet, and this is all in the budget, and I do not have the exact final numbers from them, I'm trying to guess, I've had to put something in the budget. We're gonna be at seventy thousand dollars instead of sixty-eight, if they put the fifteen percent increase, if I can get them to implement the. The, we're already covered on the, for the ten million. Uh, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars, which is what the city had before, and we need to be at twenty-one million. I'm thinking with what, I've talked with the adjuster some, I don't have his final sheet. So that would take us with the fifteen percent increase, if we had to pay it after December one in the budget for next year, I'm taking the fifteen percent increase. On insurance, which they've already told us that's what it's gonna be. It's at seventy thousand twenty-nine dollars, but you're now twenty-one million dollars worth of insured property. Instead of ten million. That's why the premium's up, because premium not up, you just didn't have enough coverage. If we got. And I personally don't, from our fiduciary liability, we don't need to tell citizens of Glenwood, we've got everything insured, we got ten million dollar worth of insurance and a disaster comes soon, we need twenty-one million to cover it. We need twenty-one million dollars, that's what it's gonna take to build it back. City of Derrick's found this out the hard way when they lost their water plant on a tornado level. And that's what you ain't paying insurance for, you'll be out. You're gonna be out about the same money you were out last year for ten million for twenty-two million.
What are you gonna do, a motion?
Well, that's gonna be, I have, I have this in the budget, as we get into the budget. I will get a, I will get a proposal back to the municipal at the exact amount. I think from what they're telling us, this is a number that you're gonna be looking at in your budget, when you look at the city hall money and the. The water department, sewer department, animal control. We think, this is what, the adjuster hasn't got the full number down here, but I think this is, this is what he was writing down. I'll have to see what the audit goes through with on it. And they're supposed to have that number, and if they get that number back to us. And we can pay it this year, you're gonna have more insurance to pay this year because you're gonna have all this in this year, but then you won't pay it again till next December. So, you, you, you may pay in this year's budget if they approve, and if you do, if they let us pay it before December the first, which we probably not will get there because December first is almost here. And that's the time the premium goes up, you'd get it at fifteen percent less than this number, that's what your premium's going up with your insurance policy next year. So, just remembering the budget, we're looking, insurances are more, are about up to the same that we were last year, but we, instead of ten million, we got twenty-two million dollar worth of coverage, if that's where it lands. And you'll do that if, to what their auditor says the values need to be, if you want to go with replacement cost. I put that in the budget, y'all need to let me know if that's the way y'all wanna work, because there's quite a bit of difference in the budget, you're writing down, we're paying, uh. Instead of sixty-eight thousand, we're paying twenty-eight thousand, if we do everything at the replacement cost day, you're gonna be at seventy thousand dollars, but you would over double the insurance that you had last year. And if y'all want me to work on that, we'll accept that when the municipal gets that audit back to you. And that number is reflected in your budget. As we look at the budget, the, the seventy thousand dollars is split up into each of the departments. As to, if you look at their water is thirty-seven thousand dollars, sewers twenty-five thousand, city general staff fifty-eight hundred. Street department sixty, six hundred twenty-six dollars, animal control buildings are four hundred twenty-nine dollars. At, if you look at all those numbers. Those are all engineered values. If y'all wanna do something different than that, you need to tell me so I know what the municipal will. I've told the municipal, I thought we should, and that's what the municipal says, you need to have the coverage it's gonna cost to put the building back if it gets destroyed. With the municipal, you have no co-insurance. So if you say, no, I don't wanna put it replacement cost, I wanna only insure it. Uh, the city's willing to take the loss, they have a loss of, we wanna insure for eighty percent of value or seventy, fifty percent of value, you can drop the premium. And then if you have a check, you're only gonna get a check, it costs you whatever you said the insurance value, these are replacement cost things, I'm working with. Right now, if we had a fire or a tornado come through, those buildings, values that are there, that makes the ten million seven hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars, that's all you're gonna get. And the city would be out, if you had a total loss, the city. Uh, would only get ten million dollars if we all, you're not gonna lose everything. I mean, I know we're not, at one time, you're not, I don't think a tornado's gonna come through and wipe out everything.
Even though you're not gonna lose everything, you still would, you're still, it's all stacking up to ten million, so it, you're just, it's still short anyway, you look at it.
Right, and you're only gonna get what your insurance needs property for.
I would say since it's the people's money, just my thoughts, whatever, it's the people's stuff, people's money, I might do a different degree with my own. But I don't see how we can hardly in good conscience underinsure it myself, with the municipal.
All the years I was on the council, I never looked at this, because the mayor always took care of it, I did not know we were insuring for fifty. Fifty cents of value of every dollar we had, that's not good fiduciary responsibility for us. Because if we have a disaster, we need to have the money to build back. I, I think, that's what you carry insurance for, and the premium's not gonna be any different than it was last year, it's sixty-eight thousand, we still have the ten million with independent carriers. It's going, premium's going up fifteen percent. Fifteen percent increase in your building property insurance is a cheap increase for next year, if any of you's looked at your insurance. That's just like I was looking at our utility bill in our budget, you know how much our utility bills are up? Electric and gas bills and phone bills are up from last year? Fifteen percent. It's, if you, I don't sit there and look at my phone bill every month, so I don't catch it, but when you look at city's budget, it kinda stares at you.
So these are the money, what you gotta, they're gonna have value on?
Yeah, we've got values up there on top. Says, uh. Engineered value, that E and G value, is gonna be what we do to, like that one line on the water plant's gonna go seven million dollars instead of three million. And then, uh, the raw water pump station don't have any insurance on it at all, it'll be two hundred thousand. And there's thirty-six thousand, they put content, if there's content in there, so that's what you're picking up on each of those lines. The building value on that second sheet is what we're insured for today.
I'm assuming we don't have anything currently on our reserve one hundred, right?
That's the biggest one we're hit on.
Six million.
Yeah, there's nothing out there insured. Well, the, the, uh, I think the, uh, digestors got some insurance in it, but it's somewhere else in there. And I was trying to write down as he was surveying, the auditor was coming around, because he had buildings that had insured, and then he picked up all the stuff he found that we didn't have insured. And I, I do not have the official sheet from him, and I gotta work something through your budget, so this number could change up or down a little bit. Because some of the, like, for instance, the sign down at the depot, we're not gonna insure that sign for forty thousand dollars. Whatever it's at, it's depot sign, it's twenty grand, I'm not gonna carry twenty thousand dollar insurance on that sign, that's crazy. Hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for that trailer house up there at the dog pound, hang. But you got some other values that were so far underinsured, those kind of the ones that were insured.
Hundred seventy-seven is the value you give if you're on. She had to say it's a hundred seventy-seven dollar.
I think that's what we're insured for.
Maybe that's insured.
That's the building value.
We're gonna have to, we'll look at that. The auditor, these numbers I'm giving you is something I try to watch with and put, I could be wrong a few dollars. The auditor, they, they actually sent an insurance adjuster out and, and measured every building, looked at every building, but the age of every building, what it's built like. And I don't have his official sheet, this is what he was telling me, he thought that'd go out, because I needed something to work with to give you guys. And they do have, the auditor's numbers are at Little Rock right now, and they're getting evaluated, and we'll have that actual number.
Yeah, we're gonna have to look at it, because it's saying that the trailers were more than maintenance shop.
That's the way it was this year. We had a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar insurance on that trailer. So we didn't have a bunch of other things insured, but the auditor will, that's, his sheet that I get back will be.
Any gas?
Alright, so y'all understand what I'm trying to do, that number may not be. Exact yet, because that's not from the municipal.
That trailer's a hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Was that one?
Looks a little bitty on it.
Okay, and also the next sheet there, the municipal health rate. I don't know how that didn't go up with ten dollars, it's six hundred, went from six hundred and thirty dollars, eighty-three cents employed to six hundred and forty dollars. Uh, we're at a five hundred dollar deductible, is that correct, Brendan?
Yes, the traditional.
Huh?
The traditional.
Yeah, we're on the traditional plan, I remember what that is. And then you get, uh, vision, dental, and there's a two dollar fifty cents a month, gives ten thousand on.
One pretty simple of that, that's a very small increase.
Yeah, well, you tell the municipal, they, they're really very, we're talking about, because everybody can't get. Y'all need to vote on that one tonight.
Yes.
So I need to vote on the, the municipal insurance, uh, ask you stay with the traditional five hundred dollars, which is six oh two twenty-five a month, and then you gotta put the vision. Dental and life insurance, which makes it six thirty-eight, uh, six forty thirty-three a month.
And it's currently six thirty-eight?
It's currently six thirty-eight and three.
I'm gonna get motion.
You have a second?
Jimmy Clark. Karen Brady. Alan Moore. Three to zero, all in favor?
Okay. Alright, go through the budget, and I'll tell you what I did. The money we talked about, that we told everybody we'd do, the ninety-two thousand dollars would take out of, uh, the hats and put in the general fund is in here, and I will explain. Where it all sets. The biggest problem we were having in our police department is we weren't, our police are so underpaid, they're all going everywhere else. The, what I, what I propose in the budget. Is to take our officers and match what the county deputy and the Murfreesboro deputy gets. Not the higher paid officer, just the bottom line deputy for the city of Murfreesboro and the county. And that's what I put in your budget, funding three officers. The, the budget before had two in it, and your cops grant had the third one, and we don't have any money on the cops grant. And then I put the money we took away from IT, put ten thousand dollars of that part-time too, which is ten hours a week. And part-time two at fifteen dollars an hour. That's, so that's, in the police department, that's what I've done different. You have a fifteen percent increase, your insurance premiums are all in there. Uh, I put a pay raise for all city employees is in there. Right now, there's two funded slots that we don't have employees hired, we're short two employees, they're still in the budget, in the budget. Uh, put ten thousand dollars of that money in animal control, fifteen thousand dollars in the fire department, ten thousand dollars in parks. And that used your ninety thousand dollars. Because you got a full police officer salary, lophy and all that to go, and that's. And that, and then I gave the police chief a dollar an hour more than the other officers. We're paying the police chief same, and I don't think it's fair for him to have the responsibility of doing the police chief, so I'll raise him a dollar an hour. The police officers were the biggest thing, that's more of an increase than gave the rest of the employees, because we've been so far behind with them. Hopefully this'll catch us up, where our officers won't be leaving every time to get one certified. And this does not pay anywhere near what the, correct what he called, the head officer at the county, the. The chief deputy and the deputy or whatever, there are two.
The chief deputy, sure.
And Murfreesboro pays more for their chief officer than the county does. But we're only matching what. The basic deputy gets, now then, if you look at our salary. We pay our police officers different than the county does, because we pay them, there ain't holidays, they get paid extra for it. So what I did is back, Murfreesboro, our county don't pay for the holidays, it's comp time. Brendan said we gotta leave it that way and acquire employment, or something, so I backed the amount out. So we're not paying the same, go look at the, if you call the county, Murfreesboro, we're not paying the same for ours, that lowest deputy, because we've got to pay eight more holidays. So we're paying eight holidays extra, which makes us exactly the same as what the county and Murfreesboro gives. But we have to pay, we have to pay them eight holidays to get to pay the same, does that make any sense?
I'm totally in favor of, just, in four of them or whatever?
Yeah.
I'm totally in favor of the police department, uh, and what I can see of the budget, the, uh, thing that has been concerning to me, and I think probably Ginny. I would imagine, but is, uh, over and over and over again, we, and I'd like to see us do something with this year's budget. That, um, if, if, if someone comes over here and we pay for schooling, they are under some kind of agreement for a period of time. Instead of us, because they don't know how many people we've trained from the next county and the next city.
They aren't under an agreement once they go to the academy to that?
We don't enforce it very good, though.
Okay, it's not been enforced, I mean.
You're under an agreement that they had to work through a year.
Uh, water and sewer plant and all that stuff is the same, I'm just speaking in general with the city.
Yes, but I was saying, as far as police officers, they are, they are, and if one left before their time was up and went to another department, you could send a request to that department to pay the difference. And they shouldn't pay it, and I'm not gonna take it upon it.
Yeah.
The one thing I will tell you that I'm.
It's very discouraging, though, really.
Yeah.
The one thing I will tell you I wanna do. The one thing I will tell you I wanna do, we're supposed to have a CDL driver here, we don't, none. I've talked to Casa Top, they've got a grant, and, uh, you have to go thirty days, eight hours a day of class now to get a CDL license. Casa Top, if the girl can get the board to approve, they've got money in a grant, and it's supposed to be pimped for her, it's come, not at Casa Top, but to come to an area and do training. And all the four officers, four people at a time in the class, that's all, that's all you can do, and, cause you're gonna do it most of the time, spend the truck. And if we do that, the alter, the employees that take that class are gonna have to stay here a year if we get them CDL licenses. Or I'm, they're not gonna go to the class, cause the city's gonna have, you, what they've agreed to do, so I don't lose total production for a month. If the girl's trying to get this approved, and it'll probably be January, February, before we can do it, where they do four hours of training a day. So the employees could do four hours of work, get their, get four hours worth of stuff caught up, so we can get so far behind, and then go to four hours a day of class for two months. So, I, I don't do, I've got all these city employees, and none of them got CDL licenses. I gotta get them a CDL license, and if they pull the one time truck without a trailer, they're legal, they hook a trailer onto it, they're illegal. Our dump truck. We gotta get some licensed employees, our dump truck, our bigger dump truck is CDL, no matter what you do, it's air brakes, and it's a fifty thousand pound truck. But basically in the budget, I changed nothing other than what I told you, and that's what we'd agreed upon in all the meetings that we had if we redid the sales tax. The only thing you're not gonna like, if you look in street fund, we now only have fifty thousand dollars a year going to street research. Cause you took a hundred thousand out of it, so fifty, is it fifty four thousand revenue?
Fifty, uh.
We've done a lot of ways, though.
We have.
And, and we've, we've got a lot of grants, and we do a lot of.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but just so you're aware, right now, on the street fund budget, by doing what we agreed to do with everybody, there's only gonna be fifty one thousand dollars a year from now on to do street research, and that's it.
No, if, uh.
If.
If the tax brings in more revenue.
I would hope you leave the rest of it in the street fund, I hope you would put the rest of it in the street fund, yeah. Well, you can adjust that every year, that's the way the hat cent, sales tax is written.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, cause we just, we figured a baseline based off of last year's numbers.
Right.
And then we also have CDs for streets that.
Could be spent.
Can be run back to streets, but that's not getting figured in.
Billy, if y'all knew it, I'm in the air on page seven of the street, y'all need to move that fifty one thousand eight hundred to street resurfacing, and I'll change it in the computer. And the, um, street signs should be six hundred, I just noticed that.
Oh, you got it on fifty one thousand on street signs, no? Yeah, that needs to be six hundred dollars, and the fifty one eight hundred needs to be moved up a lot.
Resurfacing needs to be moved up a lot.
Okay.
And you kind of changed it this afternoon.
Right. Now then, anything you guys don't like on the budget, y'all got to January, I, this is just, I have to give you a proposed budget. This did everything that was discussed in the meetings of redoing the sales tax is in here like it was asked to be done, don't change anything else up. We can do it, you're gonna have money, and I can't really give you a full number on water and sewer, because your bond issue, when we pay these notes off, our. Payments for the next two years are gonna be a lot less than they were. And we're not gonna have the other two projects done and funded, probably even in this year, it may not be in the next two years, but. Because none of those have even been released to be started engineering on yet. So we had to get the money set aside to do that, I don't know how quick that's gonna turn, but you'll, uh, you won't make the first payment, but natural resource, Brandon, to what? Usually six months after the project's completely completed.
Usually it's six months.
Six months to a year before you even make the first payment on it, after the project is completed, and we're not even, not even bidding the project yet. So you're gonna look like in water and sewer, and that money's gonna be hitting water. The sales tax is all gonna go into the water, I think your water and sewer, when we get through with this, if I understand it right, will be merged together, you won't have two separate funds anymore, but. We'll know after the fifth for sure how those have gotta be worthed, and then the sewer payment will be made out of water and sewer revenue. On the note payment on the sewer front, the note payment on the water project will all be paid out of the sewer sales tax. And those are not adjusted in your budget yet, because I don't know, but it's not gonna hurt you, it's gonna be surplus money. Not surplus money, it's gonna be money you're not having payment on next year, cause you haven't got the product.
What's you, uh, what do you got that D contract, what's that for? That money you do to labor?
Put five hundred dollars in for what DJ has to do for the city, hopefully he don't spend much of it.
Oh, okay, sure.
But I took the rest of that money and put it, uh.
Working the last one, I don't know.
Well, his labor, I'm billing him, I'm billing him labor. But he, I mean, he's only billing him so much an hour for the hours he actually spends in, and it's not been much. And some of that money that he's doing will need to go to the water, I mean, we need to go to what, instead of it all being in city general, if it's a water and sewer expense on him having to do something. It'll be billed to water and sewer, whatever department goes, so right now, general is paying all of that, which isn't fair on general.
Well, there's a little asterisk there on that, it's what it been said by the state, like the workers' comp that way told us way to be next year. And on the breach mandate, it's what you say at the.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you.
You said a little asterisk, so.
Okay.
They do, they do, uh, municipal does.
Like the health insurance for the police, and then the workers' compensation for the police?
Workers' comp, it's weird with the health, with municipal, they pay you last, this year's numbers, you pay it in January. Then next year's numbers, you'll pay the next January. At the store, we always had to pay, and then you can't balance up, in December, whatever the difference is, you pay the difference for the municipal, they roll it over, you pay them one time a year on the workers' comp.
And the, uh, the lophy pension is gonna go down that much?
No, you gotta look at the street, you gotta look at the police department, you gotta look at the third department.
Lophy pension is now twenty four percent of, of the city has.
Cause it was forty five thousand, that's seventy two dollars.
Is it, you look at the third department, you look at the.
Yeah.
Third department, that's all it is, I made her move the lophy that goes to police department, police department, not the fire department, okay, it's, it's police department. It's twenty four percent salary.
Yes.
And then it's the, fire department's just so much, and firemen, cause it's probably.
It's six dollars a fireman per month.
Per active fireman, and it's twenty four percent of your full salary.
Okay.
Okay?
Which will have another session in the next hour, but.
Huh?
We're gonna have another meeting just before.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, this is just my proposal, y'all, y'all gonna have to, whatever y'all want to adjust on that, y'all will guess, that's, I just put that out there. And like I say, water and sewer department's gonna look like you're making a fortune this year, cause you don't have two of your big enough payments in there. But, and you probably won't have those for, I wouldn't, it may be, could be three years. Before, cause you gotta be, all the money's gotta be drawn out, and then they give you so many months before you make a payment for natural resources, so. But we gotta remember those payments are coming, even though you're gonna have some money right now that's not gonna make a payment, cause you refinanced your note, the note payment went down. And you're, you're gonna be able to use all the sales tax money now where you weren't, so. The DMR in there, y'all, are y'all good on the budget? We're gonna have some meetings on that, and if y'all wanna adjust, have any question on the budget, y'all need to get back with me, cause y'all aren't approving the budget, y'all don't have, y'all won't approve that till January. I just had to present to you, and I, the best way I could figure it, and I think it's, there's not much to change, and I don't think. If y'all don't like the way we're doing something, y'all can tell me, if we'll change it, that's where we'll go. Uh, DMR, we passed on everything this month, for October, so there's your DMR. That's just a matter of information. You got your two employee manuals, y'all have never approved, it's been working on through three or four council meetings, there's everything that Dustin, we told Dustin to change in them. Uh, we did change the, uh, you got ninety days probation, that's been added in the regular employee manual that wasn't in there. And what else was a one thing that we.
Vacation.
Vacation will be the three weeks.
Yeah, we changed it, yeah, it wasn't forty, eighty, one forty.
Yeah.
Hey, I do have a question, this one is the, did we not say that we're doing Christmas Eve and Christmas Day?
Christmas.
Changed the.
Christmas Eve was a half a day and Christmas Day, yes, that's what I thought you said.
No, I thought it was Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
You got a half a day, there's a whip's rolled up in there.
I've changed the holidays.
The holiday did change, you don't get birthday, but you got some other day or something.
Day for Thanksgiving, or day, Thanksgiving and the day after.
We've been getting that, we've been getting ten, but y'all added more vacation times to the.
You added vacation time, but you took some days off, where you gave a week's vacation.
I thought you did Christmas Eve and Christmas, yeah, I think that.
Christmas Eve was a half a day, I think, and Christmas Eve showed a half a day.
I've now got added that, a half a day if the calls comes, if the birthday. So my man got seven and a half days.
If y'all wanna change, that's what you, if you wanna change that, both can change that, and we'll get a change in before you can even bring it out for that.
And he said, if y'all want some changes made in it before you actually vote on it, let him down.
You're gonna have to get this voted on, because it's gotta be in place January one.
Yeah, well, we got New Year's Day, tomorrow day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Renter's Day, Thanksgiving Day, and then after Thanksgiving. So why are we, yeah, we need to do Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, is what I thought it said. And then we upped the vacation?
Yes.
Because we took away.
Two days.
Two days.
Took away two days, but you gave it one more, for the ones that have been here over four years.
Over two years, yeah. This is my opinion, for the other.
You need to change that whole wording on that, because Christmas Eve, Christmas Eve, and Christmas Day.
Yes.
Just take off the.
Half a day.
Half a day, and.
It just needs to be Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve, okay.
So be the twenty four percent.
Christmas Eve with the, with Christmas Eve.
That says it's on a scheduled workday, cause you got a Saturday and Sunday sometimes, it's not in there, you won't pay it still, or you won't not take it out to?
I think it'll make it on a scheduled workday.
If it, if it's on a scheduled workday, cause it falls Saturday, Sunday.
So that you don't get holiday pay, cause we, even if it falls on a weekend.
If it falls on a Saturday, you should get Friday and Monday. If Christmas Eve is Saturday, and Christmas Day is Sunday, you'll get Friday and Monday pay, cause.
Then you just need to take that out, they could put Christmas Eve, period.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
If that's what you want.
That's my opinion, I'm not the only one here.
Somebody put a motion on the floor on that.
Yeah.
And what, if you want it, you need to change it, so put a motion on the floor.
I'm gonna put a motion, I want Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Christmas Eve.
And if it falls on a Saturday and Sunday, then you get Friday and Monday.
Whatever works, you still get two days.
You still get two days.
Let me ask you the question, uh, let's just, so you're, you get paid for that even though your office is fine, but in the event you needed to have a clean work, they still would have to, right?
That's up to the mayor's discretion, yes, it's.
Yeah, you still.
You gotta, if you worry, if you work, you're gonna claim for that on top of your.
On top of it, you'll get.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so it ain't like we're gonna not have anybody, you get everybody.
You'll have to have somebody working that day.
Yeah, I got you, I got you, okay. Yeah, I, I go to that.
You still gonna have to have somebody working those days, cause you gotta check plans.
One, two, three, four.
Hopefully you don't have a water leak, or a sewer line stopped up, or something like that, so you still might have. You took one day, you took the, basically the only day you took away was their birthday, and everything.
And y'all took off Martin Luther King Day, y'all don't have any flights working for you, so y'all don't have an issue with that right now, but at some point you could.
You had to honor it.
We took.
But anyway. You took two days away, but you had a week's vacation.
That's correct.
Alright, so, I'm back to the motion part of it.
I'll save that motion.
The motion was both for the police and for the employees, or just for the employee payment?
The city, the police is fine.
Yeah, that's.
It would be, whether it be on both.
But Christmas Eve and Christmas, twenty four, twenty five. And if it falls on a weekend, it'll.
You don't, you don't wanna say anything about it, you're just getting paid Christmas Eve and Christmas Day.
Christmas Eve, Christmas.
Doesn't matter what day it falls on, you're gonna pay for it.
Yes, but if they work that Friday, then you're paying an extra, so they need to be.
If it's Friday and they work Friday, they'll get Saturday.
They get that Friday and then.
So you gotta let them off Friday, and let them off Monday. If it falls on Saturday, Sunday, you have to let them have off Friday, cause they're all open.
Police can't do that.
Police can't do that.
Well, I understand that, I'm talking about that.
Well, the same thing with the city, we'd have someone, one of the.
I guess that's why y'all get paid for a holiday while you're working on it, y'all, a week's salary, but y'all get paid for the holiday while you're working with it.
So, I don't know how you get working, but like, it's only gonna, it'll fall like it falls on Saturday, Sunday, they're gonna get Friday, Monday off, if it falls on Sunday, Monday, they're gonna get Friday, Monday off.
City Hall's gonna end up being closed those days anyway, so they'll just follow the suit of what City Hall's doing. Everyhow that works, they're gonna be closed on it.
If they get, if it falls on Saturday, they're gonna work a full week, twenty to take, so they're gonna have a seven day.
Trying to figure out the motions, so you second that one?
Yeah.
Okay, Alan seconded it. Roll call, Carrie Brady? Jamie Clark?
What is that one?
Your motion?
Yes, I.
And Alan Moore? Okay, so that.
That one is automatically fall in, City Hall's gonna be closed, if you give it two paid vacation days, City Hall will be closed, if it's Saturday, Sunday, it'll be closed. Whatever the state, the state's gonna follow the same suit, we'll just follow, you just follow the same suit as what the state does, everyhow they're closing down for the holidays. The city, the city will follow the same suit.
They work a full week, and then you get Friday, Sunday, that's when they work.
Yeah, but you're gonna get holiday, the city off, the state offices are gonna be closed those two days, you're gonna follow suit, city will just follow suit, whatever the state does. Well, that, that was the, you just followed, that's why we've always done holidays, we follow them whatever the states days are, if you, if it's on a Saturday, you're gonna say, you follow whatever state. Anything else y'all wanna do on that, or do you have most acceptable with those changes? Y'all look over, cause this needs to be implemented.
Or if we can, motion to. Maybe look at it. Begin the next month, I mean, I don't know if you're gonna see it or read all this.
They have to approve it next month, cause he's gonna have to do it change.
December, yeah, do it by beginning.
Y'all wanna, y'all read over these, and if there's anything you want to change on before then, we've got to vote on this.
I'm gonna motion the table is till next month, and then vote on it.
Okay, I have a second to that motion.
I'll second it, okay.
Carrie Brady? Alan Moore? And Jamie Clark? Table's the next one.
Okay. And we will vote on those now, then, if y'all see anything that needs to be changed in, the budget, you don't have to have two before then.
Yeah.
The employee manual, you do, the budget will decide on in, uh, in January.
I know I'm not a voting member of the council, but we do have. A pregnant employee at this time, so.
Okay. Keep that in mind when redoing. Tell me what you want, how you want it worded. I will poll if y'all have changes in this, because we won't be meeting again, I'll poll you. And make sure that's the way all three of, or all four of you want it done, and I'll get it changed, if there's any changes in it, and then you'll vote on it at the council meeting, but if somebody says, okay, I want this changed, I'll call all four of you. And then I'll change it to the way the four of you agreed to me on the phone, but you're gonna have to vote, then you'll vote on it finally. That way, if there's any changes, we need to have the changes done before we get to council meeting. So somebody says, I want, I want to add twenty five more holidays, and that's what you agree on, and we'll have that changed, and I'm just throwing that out there, I don't think you have twenty five more holidays, but. So if somebody says, I want, I want that twenty-five more holidays, and that's what you agree on, then we'll have that changed, and I'm just throwing that out there, I don't think I have twenty-five more holidays, but whatever you want done on it that's different than that, I'll poll whoever called, and we'll poll the four of you, and I'll make that change, if there's any changes to be done in it, and then I'll present with those changes, if there's anything changed, you'll know about them, and I'll get Dustin to change them, then you'll vote on them in December, okay?
One of the things Billy and y'all have, I think we might need to look at with the personal policy is to be sure to abide by the federal family act, which covers pregnancy.
Yeah, we're a mal, we're a mal driven.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have something that says y'all will abide by the federal family act, I'll get y'all to talk with that, but there's certain things you can't just leave out.
Okay.
And that covers any woman that's birthed and with children. You don't have a problem with me, but.
We don't want you coming up pregnant all the time, get out now.
All right, any other discussion on the employee manuals? All right, we'll bring those back up for the December meeting, uh, Stephen?
Yes, sir. Uh, the property or parcel in question is, um, on the corner of Highway Eight, Highway Seventy or Twenty-Seven, right there at the bridge, currently owned by Bill and Amanda Wilson, I've been given permission by Sean to represent the property, um, I've seen what our options are on zoning it as commercial.
I think it's already zoned commercial, isn't it?
It is already zoned commercial.
As long as it's residence, only stays residence.
It's residence until it's, something's gone away.
Okay, what do I need to go about getting that registered as a?
It already is.
It's, so.
It's up to, I think it's two hundred and fifty, it's a yellow, it's a, it's a yellow line, two hundred.
Two hundred and fifty feet.
Two hundred and fifty feet from the yellow line, and that's gonna catch it both ways.
Right.
On both, I mean, unless that property is deeper than I think it is.
It's, no, it's not.
Even if it is, if the property all goes further back, if I understand it right, the property goes further back as long as it's on the same deed, it can go further back, it's just gotta be two hundred and fifty.
Right, but what we can't stop somebody from doing is putting some residential past the commercial.
Right, but it can be, the whole property could be.
You can build a Hardee's in the front of it, and then later on, put something by residence behind it.
Apartment complex behind it.
And it's over two hundred and fifty foot back.
I got what you're saying, okay, um, that's all I needed to know, and.
Zone about as perfect as you want it zoned, to be honest with you.
Okay.
I think if you change it to commercial, I, I, I own property too, but I'd, I'd leave it hanging alone, cause right now you've got, it's hanging cash flow, it's sell pretty good, and it's not hemmed up on commercial. If you change it to commercial, and then you're gonna lose residential, right now you got residential and commercial.
It is over two hundred and fifty foot back.
Yeah, yeah, and that's something to look at down the road, I'm, I'm kinda, I may run out of land, so I'll just have to look at it, Sean.
I don't know what size of a lot, sorry.
Well, if he said you're not gonna run out of land.
Three point something acres and one point something acres.
You know what I'm saying, Stephen?
Four point ones, oh, yeah.
You're not gonna run out of land, cause it's on the same deed anyway.
Right, right.
You're not gonna run out of land, but right now you're.
So even if you left it residentially in one certain little section of it, you're, you're saving money tax wise.
Well, you already have it residential in one little section.
It's all residential now, but it goes.
If you change it to commercial, formally change it, then you only have commercial, but if you leave it grandfathered down on residential, you got residential and commercial, cause the.
That's what I needed to know, okay. And, uh, the, is that Hillside Drive that comes in the backside, is that what it's called?
Well, that changes off that little road that comes behind him, change off, Hillside turns up behind.
Yeah, yeah.
Hillside, but where, Hillside turn, you go through the hill, and I don't know what that little.
Clover, maybe, I don't remember, there's, I think that's the property line as well, but it steps across that drain, uh, just a small portion, so it, it, that's probably zoned residential as it is, correct?
It's over two hundred and fifty foot back, if what you're saying is right.
Okay, okay, that's all I needed to know, then, I appreciate it.
And the Pimpleball Drive is not here, is it?
No.
Uh, I can't meet on the first Saturday night or the second Saturday night of December. When can we meet for an employee Christmas party? I'm doing it at my house, so. I can't be, I've got a store Christmas party the first Saturday night, golf course, second Saturday night, or vice versa. But I'm gonna do it at my house for all the city employees, family and kids, I just need to know how many I need to do.
So you got the sixteenth basically open, or the next one is actual Christmas, basically Christmas.
Y'all don't have to do it on Saturday night.
Yeah.
I don't care what night you do it, I'll go, I'll do it on church time, reason.
Last Saturday I work day, so I'd be, I mean, I'm off.
On the sixteenth?
The ninth, I'm out, after that, I'm good after the ninth, that's my, the ninth is sitting on my weekend, so whatever y'all want to do.
Store Christmas party at my house, for all the employees, family, I mean, all the boys and kids, I just need to know how many I need to cook for.
What do you want to do on what day?
That's what I'm asking, I just can't do it the first Saturday night or second Saturday night, cause I got store, I got my two businesses on the store, and the golf course, one of them's a golf course night, one of them's a.
Wait about thirty here last year, didn't we?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, roughly thirty.
Oh, here, the, the.
Yeah, yeah, last couple years.
Uh, I'm good with the sixteenth.
Is the sixteenth all right?
I mean, that's a month, that's it.
As far as I know, once someone up.
You're good with eating, right?
Yeah.
But you gotta get off.
What time y'all wanna do it, uh, what time y'all wanna start eating? In one day, that's all I need to know, and I don't know.
Women on kids, I think I got a ball team.
There's all, there's all women.
Kids is Christmas, we split, I just, I just never have liked a Christmas party where you can't bring kids, that's what it's all about. So, yeah, we'll bring the kids, or I just need to know how many kids and all that, so. Dogs.
Some people consider their dogs.
Don't you do this.
I got, I got three at my house.
Hey, hey, I've been saying, I got.
Don't you do this, don't you have a resident dog the week prior to it? Just call everybody.
Don't give me the numbers, Jimmy.
Yeah.
Don't give me the numbers later, I just need to know the date.
I'll, it took you, I'm good with the sixteenth, perfect for me.
Sixteen, okay?
Sixteen's fine, like I said, I'm at home, I have the.
Do you want, we'll get a head tip for you, do you want it?
I have a motion.
Just to bring a dish, about what?
Say it again, sorry?
I asked, does he want us to bring a dish?
Oh, we're bringing a dish, no, it's our store Christmas party. I'll take care of this, this, it's not, employees don't need to have to bring a dish, it's our Christmas party.
Okay.
So this is for the city?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, he keeps saying store, too.
He said store, that's.
I mean, well, I got the store, too, too. I got a contractor, Thursday, I'll score. She got a hundred and fifty feet Thursday.
Well, that's really not setting me up.
Number eighteen. For you.
All right. My motion was perfect, what, what is it?
Like, we're good, Jerry.
I'm like a motion, we're adjourned.
Alan's got a motion with adjourned, Jimmy's taking the motion, Carrie Brady. Jimmy Clark. Alan Moore, all in favor.